Non-vaccinated employees to be tested frequently, among other requirements. Our staff is in discussion with public health officials regarding testing programs and how feasible it is to implement them. As those discussions progress and we determine how to make such programs become available, we will be able to discuss next steps regarding more stringent vaccination requirements for our staff. And before I turn things over to our district response team to provide the rationale for our recommendation that we will provide momentarily, I will add this. In view of the vaccine plateau and the alarming case rate, leading public health officials are nearly unanimous in their support for mandatory face coverings for all students and staff attending or serving in K-12 settings. And so at this time, I would like to ask members of our district response team to present, led by our chief human resources officer, Christine Pejo.
Can we please get the presentation deck up? Or do I just need to hit here? All right, thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Christine Pejo, Chief Human Resources Officer on behalf of CMS's district response team for COVID-19. Good morning, board members, general counsel, staff, and the general public. As our community is aware, the superintendent earlier this week issued a memorandum that outlined very specifically the support and context surrounding the superintendent's recommendation. This morning, I'll be going over some of those highlights from that memo and even some more recent guidance that since the issuance of that memo has come out. So first of all, we want to talk about federal law and the federal government's position on COVID response. And the U.S. Centers for Disease Control, commonly referred to as CDC, has come out this week and stated that all individuals in a K-12 setting should wear face coverings indoors. And when we say K-12 setting, this would include pre-K students. It includes anyone aged two or older. The American Academy of Pediatrics also has opined that face covering should be required in school settings, again, for individuals aged two and older where our vaccination rates are low or students are not yet eligible to receive a vaccine. And later on in the presentation, we are going to detail what our current vaccination rates look like in Mecklenburg County. Now, the NCDHHS, that's the acronym for the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, which puts out our K-12 toolkit and response guide that employees are expected to follow, that includes recommended and mandated guidance. Just yesterday, this toolkit was updated to reflect that all individuals in a K-12 setting, again, this would include pre-K, should wear face coverings indoors. Now, one important thing to note, that in recent revisions to the toolkit, students who are deemed to be close contacts after an interaction with somebody who's tested positive in a school setting would not have to quarantine regardless of vaccination status if the students are properly masked. Now, this is key because you'll recall that last year, we had several instances of sending students to remote learning. Well, a very important distinction going into the school year is that this board nor any school district has the authority to be able to transition students to remote learning. So in the event a student is asked to quarantine, that student, for as long as that student is out, will not have access to remote learning as they did last year. Finally, Mecklenburg County Public Health, whom we have some representatives with us today who are going to be available to answer and address any questions that the board might have, has come out and made recommendations really countywide for residents, encouraging residents to wear masks indoors. And specifically, again, for individuals in a K-12 setting, the county health department does support this recommendation that regardless of vaccination status, students, staff, visitors, volunteers in indoor settings at CMS should be wearing face coverings indoors.
Unenrolled.
Yes.
Please be respectful.
Now, it's important to understand the trends that we're seeing in Mecklenburg County and really across the state. For the purposes of this morning's meeting, we're focusing specifically on Mecklenburg County. So going back to June 11th, our positivity rate was 1.9%. And you'll recall that on our weekly metrics dashboard, which is still published weekly on the CMS Facebook site, categorizes our statistics in the areas of green, which is good, yellow, and then red, which is more concerning. So on June 11th, the positivity rate for COVID-19 cases was 1.9%. The case rate per 100,000 was 33.3. On July 23rd, at the time of the memo that the superintendent shared earlier this week, the positivity rate was 8.4%, with the case rate per 100,000 jumping into the red category at 110.4. Just today, new statistics were released where our positivity rate in Mecklenburg County is now at 10.9%, once again in the red, when it was just green only in June. And the case rate per 1,000 again increased to 181.3.
That's not children. We need to have immunity. Respectful, please.
Not data for children. Free to speak.
What's the death rate?
Now, it's important to...
Come on, guys.
Not in publications, but death rate. Please.
Children infection rate.
So here's the thing, right now, we need to hear this information and the public needs to hear this information. So please stay silent.
Throw it! How many people are actually dying as opposed to how many people are getting COVID?
Please be quiet. Let her continue, please.
So it's also important to, we mentioned vaccination rates earlier because we know that a certain percent, a rather significant percent of our student population are ineligible at this time to receive a vaccination. So specifically, individuals under the age of 12 are not approved to receive a vaccine. And when we look at our vaccination rates across the county, and again, this was as of earlier this month, so these are approximate numbers and they could very may, very could have shifted since the time of this reporting, but the percent of total eligible population in Mecklenburg County was at 57% vaccinated. However, when we take a specific look at individuals aged 12 to 17, we're only seeing 35% of those young individuals who are vaccinated at this time. So those are the primary highlights from the recommendation that the superintendent issued earlier this week. And I'm going to turn it back over to the superintendent to make his recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. Pejo. Board members, Madam Chair, I would like to share specifically what the recommendation is coming from staff. For the 2021-2022 school year, all students, staff, volunteers, and visitors inside CMS schools and facilities will be required to wear face coverings indoors, subject to limited exceptions and approved exemptions. Universal face covering requirements will be reviewed at the end of each academic quarter or when local metrics and evolving guidance suggest that safety protocols, including face coverings, should be revised. We believe this is the best way to make sure that our students get maximum in-person time this school year. We know in-person is how most of our students learn best, and teaching and learning is our mission. I ask humbly that you adopt this recommendation to help keep students and staff in our classrooms and not in quarantine. Madam Chair, that is my recommendation.
Okay. Thank you very much. Board members, do you have any questions? No? All right. Do you have a question, Mr. Strain?
I don't know where you want to field the questions and speak to our subject matter expert that's in here to address us. Do you want to do that now or...
Excuse me. Yeah, I mean, we can do it now and then we do have a motion to bring forth, so either way.
Okay. So, a couple of positional statements for me. COVID is real. Masks work. The vaccine works. I have a question as to what problem we're trying to solve here by imposing restrictions and constraints on our youth and our staff. If vaccines work, which is why I got my shot, then I believe we are at much lower risk of serious illness and death. In fact, we're at much lower risk, having received a vaccine, of even contracting the disease.
That's right.
So from that perspective, the vaccine works. It reduces the transmission rate. The "are not" of a vaccinated individual is very different from the "are not" of an unvaccinated individual, as well as the ability to contract the disease, have a serious illness, and heaven forbid, as some of you know, I'm all too close, death. And so from that perspective, I'm back to a risk assessment. A year ago, when we had this conversation, the AAP had told us, had recommended it to us, to have kids in the schools. I didn't accept that blindly. I wanted to understand why those professionals, the experts, had made the recommendations they had. And what I found in digging into it was it had to do with ACE receptors, something I know nothing about, but that was the key. ACE receptors are the receptor to which this virus attaches. And what they said was, children in particular, pre-adolescent children, have far fewer ACE receptors because there's a good deal of ACE receptor development that occurs through puberty in order to develop their receptor system that exists to which the virus attaches as an adult. Okay, that made sense to me. Everything made sense. Their recommendations made sense. So now I'm asking the same questions again. They've taken a position and I want to understand what the problem statement is we're trying to solve with the recommendation. So there's a term that's been thrown about that is the pandemic of the unvaccinated. I believe that's likely the case. In fact, if I could find the data to support it, I'm almost positive that's what it would say. But we're not publishing "are nots" for vaccinated versus unvaccinated. Here's what I know. In June, this was pretty widely published, in June, the percentage of deaths in the, if I look at the COVID deaths in the United States, 99.5% were unvaccinated. Now, I'm not just concerned about death, I'm concerned about serious illness. So what metric could I possibly look at to represent serious illness? Well, hospitalizations is a decent metric. I would consider a hospitalization a serious illness. If somebody has to go to the hospital, you know, as opposed to, you know, laying low for two days, then I think that is likely. If they're admitted, if that's a hospital admission, I would characterize that as a serious illness. And so then I think about, well, if I go back to the whole ACE receptor conversation, what is the rate of hospital admissions in the individuals who have not been eligible for a vaccination? I have a 12-year-old. She just turned 12 this month, last month, this month. And she chose to get the vax, right? She chose to get the vaccine after being given the information, and that's what she chose to do. All of my children, all the people in my home that are eligible, I have a child who's not eligible. So my question, as I'm doing a risk assessment in my home in this school district, is what is the risk to kids who have not been eligible? And as I look at those numbers, those numbers are negligible. So in the state of North Carolina, DHHS publishes these numbers. They don't publish the numbers of less than 12, so they include up to 17. But as I look at these numbers, it's hovering about 2%, sometimes under 2, sometimes over 2, almost never.
Mr. Strain, this is Rhonda, I'm on the remote here. I've got a lot of voices behind you talking. If you could, I really want to hear what you have to say because it's very important to me and I think it would be important to the Facebook and virtual audience. So if you could just maybe ask the people behind you that are chattering, please stop.
Rhonda, I'm not sure where it's coming in.
Yeah, it actually is quiet in here right now.
Yeah. So, you know, if I look at the DHHS numbers, they average 2.3% 0 to 17, 2.3% of hospital admissions. And so if I look at those in terms of actual numbers, we're talking about, in the state of North Carolina, two a day, two admissions a day. Now, that's two more than I wish it were. My question is, what problem are we trying to solve? If we're trying to solve the pandemic of the unvaccinated adults by imposing restrictions and constraints on our unvaccinated children, and vaccinated children for that matter, who are not at risk, I have an issue with it. This is a, then this recommendation is a, this recommendation is not for the health and safety of our students and staff. It's a, it is a public health, community action that actually is not targeting a significant risk because the significant risk is not borne out by the data. The data does not say that five to 11-year-olds who have not been eligible for the vaccine are at serious risk. And the reason I say that, please, the reason that I say that is because I'm looking at the rate of serious illness based on the hospitalization rate, to the extent that I can, and the deaths. So the deaths in school-aged children in this state is three. Now, that's three tragic deaths, but I remember the 17-18 flu season where I lost a dear friend of mine and my children, my twins, almost lost one of their besties, who was in the hospital 71 days, 60 of which she was in a coma. The flu is at least twice as dangerous to these kids than is COVID. We were told that, we were told that a year plus ago by the CDC, and all of the data bears it out. And so I'm back to a risk assessment, understanding what problem we're trying to solve and what action we're taking to solve that problem. The problem does not exist in our schools. The problem does not exist in our staff or the children in our schools. The problem is serious illness and death. And no action we take is going to change that.
Mr. Strain, I'm not sure if it was a question or I know you mentioned you wanted to just make a comment. What I would invite Dr. Meg Sullivan, who's here with the Mecklenburg County Public Health Department, to come forward. What I know is that the CDC, the American Academy of Pediatrics, our health officials locally and nationally, infectious disease experts, our two largest hospital healthcare systems, all have said and recommended that schools require face coverings indoors for K-12 students and staff. Again, neither of us are medical or infectious disease experts, but those organizations are. And we actually happen to have a medical expert with us. Dr. Sullivan, I'd invite you, if you have any comments to share, to do so, please.
Sure. Thank you for that and good morning, everyone. Thank you for inviting me to be here today. I know this is an incredibly important topic and I am, you know, am just again honored to be here. Mr. Strain, I first just want to thank you for your comments. I think you made a lot of really good points and I think probably the one that hopefully we all heard loudest and clearest and think about every single day is what you said at the very beginning. COVID is real, masks work, vaccines work. I think if we all continue to say that over and over and over again and act upon it, we will start to see our numbers go down in the community. But I am here today and Superintendent Winston, as you noted, we have been in significant conversations throughout this entire pandemic about what decisions and recommendations we need to make to keep our children in school, to keep everybody in school, both students and staff, as healthy as possible and to protect our community. And so here, right now, we are at a point where I think we all recognize that our kids need to be in school. That is the best place for them. Education is a key to their success and we need to do everything possible to keep them in place. I think we also recognize that over the past 18 months of this pandemic, we have learned the tools that we have in place to be able to do that as safely as possible. I think absolutely, and I will say this with every opportunity, we have a tool right now that we didn't have before, which is vaccine. And every single person who is eligible right now needs to get vaccinated in order to decrease spread in the community, to protect themselves, to protect their community members, and to protect our school communities. But we also know that we have other tools, as we are at a place right now where we have a significant percentage of our students who are not yet eligible, as well as unfortunately, a significant percentage of our community who is eligible, who has not yet been vaccinated, and that is masks. We have incredibly clear data that masks work, masks decrease spread, and that it is an important tool that schools need to make. Mr. Strain, you referenced last year when the American Academy of Pediatrics came out and recommended in-person learning for students. One of the core aspects of that recommendation was to have mitigation measures in place, and that include masks. Right now, we are unfortunately at a point where we have an incredibly highly contagious strain in our community that is causing significant illness and hospitalizations. We are seeing our numbers go up. We are seeing that around 20% of those cases right now are in individuals under the age of 18. So we do know that people are susceptible. We are concerned about the further impact that this will have, the potential severity. But underline all of that. We know the tools that we have work. We need to keep our kids in school. Masks work to protect them. And I'm here representing public health to say we support this recommendation.
Dr. Sullivan, while we have you, can you speak about the need to quarantine and how or whether, what the impact, how masks have an impact on that if there's exposure in a classroom?
Yeah, I think it's a really important point. And, you know, one of the other things, one of the major roles of public health is to understand that during this pandemic, if and when there are positive cases in the school, as you know very well, we are intimately involved in case investigation and contact tracing. So investigating the case, determining if they were at the school while they were infectious, determining anybody who was exposed or considered to be a close contact that may be at higher risk, and then implementing additional measures, including quarantine for those individuals. This is something that we've been doing throughout the entire pandemic, but recently the recommendations changed. And I think, again, this is a testament to this clear science and data we have on the effectiveness of masks at protecting the wearer and protecting for spread, to recognize that right now in the school setting, if students are consistently masked and wearing masks throughout, even if they are exposed to somebody who is positive for COVID at that time, recognize that there's still a risk, that, you know, there's always a level of risk, but that risk is considered to be low enough that those children will not have to quarantine. They can attend school. Obviously, they still would have to monitor for symptoms and any student who develops any symptoms would have to stay home. They would continue to need to wear masks appropriately and implement all of the other measures that CMS is working to do, but that wearing that mask would eliminate missed school days for students and would allow them to be in schools because it so significantly decreases the risk of spread.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions, especially while we have Dr. Sullivan at the podium? Well, I just want to thank, I just, questions from the board. This is not a meeting for public comment. So Dr. Sullivan, I just want to thank you and your department for your partnership during this critically important time. Thank you for sharing your information and being willing to stand up here today. All right, well, at this time, I'm going to turn to Board Member Carol Sawyer to make a motion.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I move to approve universal indoor face covering requirements for all students, staff, volunteers, and visitors inside CMS facilities and buses for the 2021-22 school year as recommended by the superintendent. Face coverings will be optional outside of CMS facilities. The board requires that face coverings be worn by all individuals inside CMS facilities and buses unless the individual meets an exception as set forth in the Center for Disease Control or North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services guidelines, including the Strong Schools North Carolina Toolkit. Universal face covering requirements shall be reviewed by the superintendent at the end of each academic quarter or sooner if local metrics and evolving guidance suggest that safety protocols, including using face coverings, should be reviewed.
All right. If you would like to speak to your motion, do you have a second? Oh, yeah, we need a second. A second from Jennifer Delahara. Okay.
Yes, thank you. I want our students and staff to be safe in school. We have tools to protect them and I would encourage everyone who is eligible to get vaccinated. If we could increase, increase the vaccination rate in our county, in our state, we could stop COVID and further protect everyone in the community. So get vaccinated and please wear masks when you're in crowded spaces indoors. And that concludes my comments. I support the motion. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Sawyer. And I know Ms. Cheek and Ms. Marshall both had questions. So I'm going to turn to you, Ms. Cheek, and let us know if you, if there are any staff that you need to come back to the podium or if you need Dr. Sullivan to come back to the podium.
I would like Dr. Sullivan, if I can, please. Thank you so much. Dr. Sullivan, I've spent a great deal of time the last couple of days talking to medical professionals in our area, including people that are very well-renowned pediatricians, infectious disease, and internal medicine doctors, many of which are on the front lines caring for COVID. They're telling me two things, this is from the pediatricians, that they're seeing a lot more COVID in children with the Delta variant and they're saying that the Delta variant is causing much more sickness. It is much more virulent in children and they are treating them throughout their healthcare system right now. This particular pediatrician that is well-renowned in our community told me that they do support the American Academy of Pediatrics. So I would just, if you are from the health department standpoint, are you seeing an increase in the virulence in children and the rate of infection? I do understand the data that Dr. or that Mr. Strain mentioned, which in the initial phases of this disease, we were not seeing a high prevalence in those that were young. So I just wanted to know if you guys at the health department can corroborate that information I'm receiving from the doctors on the front lines treating patients.
Yeah, thank you for that question. And obviously, the doctors on the front lines, right, are seeing this firsthand and, you know, seeing those individual cases, which I know are just so heartbreaking to see. But what I can say is what we are seeing at the health department, and I know we have reported publicly and we have new data coming out today, but first, specifically when you look at our cases and the breakdown of who is testing positive, we have seen an increase in the percentage of positive cases that are in our younger population. So specifically, the majority of cases are in individuals under the age of 39, but as I mentioned before, right now about 20% of those cases, at least from the recent data, were in individuals under the age of 18, which is an increase. Part of that definitely has to do with vaccination, right? Conversely, we're seeing a much lower percentage in individuals over the age of 60, and we know we have... know we have very high vaccination rates in our community, or the highest vaccination rates in our community among that population. So part of this does show that the vaccine works, and again, I will say it again, if you have not yet been vaccinated and you're eligible, please do so. But I do think the other concern that we have, and this is being borne out just with data that we're seeing across the country, is, as I mentioned before, we have a Delta strain. The Delta strain is much, much, much more contagious. When you look at the viral load, which is the amount of virus that is in the body of someone who has tested positive or infected, meaning their ability to spread it to others is higher, and so I think that that is also contributing to the increased number of cases, and again, we're seeing that in children as well.
Thank you. I appreciate the feedback coming from the Health Department. It does mirror what I'm hearing in the medical community, and I also did hear that the majority of cases in the worst condition, which would be in ICU and ventilators, are mostly unvaccinated or patients with immunocompromised that have been vaccinated but have other incommens conditions that are causing them to be more susceptible. The other thing I've heard is that there are, there is, there does seem to be transmission in asymptomatic vaccinated folks out there, which is why these people that I've spoken to in the healthcare community did recommend following the AAP guidelines. So I appreciate that.
Ms. Marshall, did you have a question for Dr. Sullivan? And then I'll come back to you, Ms. Ship.
I, if this may be for Dr. Sullivan, but it really may be more for our operational folks. Are you all able to hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
Quarantine. The Safe Schools Toolkit, I believe, has had a change in quarantine, and that if a positive case is found in a classroom, but children are masked appropriately, then they do not have to quarantine. Am I correct in that thinking?
Yes, Ms. Marshall, this is Christine Pajot. You are correct.
Okay. Also, I don't, and I'm in a place where I have not been able to get real solid viewing of the meeting, and I may have missed this on a slide, but it is also my thinking that per state law right now, we have a virtual school set up, and this is a standalone school, and this is what the state has allowed us to do, and so our teachers will not be teaching in a hybrid method right now. So students that are sent home on quarantine would then have, for whatever reason, if there was, because they had symptoms, or if they were unmasked, then they would be at home without instruction virtually. They would just be receiving information like children have normally been receiving that over time. Am I correct in that thinking?
Yes, that's correct.
For our state statutes where we are right now.
Yes, that is correct. Unlike last year, where there was a provision under state law that students could be transitioned to remote learning in response to outbreaks or quarantining, what have you, at the school level, that law is, has since expired and lapsed, so we are not in a position to be able to authorize students to remote learning if they are sent home for quarantine purposes. So that's why masking is really an effective tool to keep more of our students in the classroom, where many of our students learn best.
Also, I don't know if we were able to talk about the testing of protocols which we're going to be putting in place. It's my understanding that the state has been lagging to get us going in this program, so we don't have specifics at this point. Is that, is that correct? And that may be have been discussed on the slide, and I missed that as well.
That's right. So it was not on one of our slides, Ms. Marshall, but as you may be aware, several weeks ago, even really probably going on a couple of more months ago, the district, our district, had opted into a program at the state level, and we were accepted into the pilot program to do surveillance and diagnostic testing in our schools with students and staff. We are expecting very soon to get more information from the state regarding a vendor partner, who then can work with us in collaboration with Mecklenburg County Public Health to come up with a plan that best supports our current climate and situation within CMS schools. So that could look a number of ways, but we are hoping to share information on that in the coming weeks.
And Ms. Marshall, let's just remember to keep your line of questions and dialogue to, Jermaine, to masks today, and August 10th, we'll be able to talk a lot more about vaccinations and surveillance testing and all the other back to school stuff.
Certainly, but I do want to say that if we have more information, we can do a better job on pinpointing, and therefore our masking and quarantines will be cut down. So that's, that's the direction I wanted to go with that, with that, with those questions. So thank you very much.
All right, and then Ms. Ship, looks like, did you, did you have any comments on the motion?
You know, I would like to ask the question probably of Dr. Sullivan. When we talk about serious illness, there's also side effects that happen when you get the virus. So I think we can't, I think a lot of times when you say, well, is it serious illness? How do you define that? And then is that what we are okay with to say? And I think this discussion on how many students are actually getting the virus in terms of data and becoming hospitalized, but it is important that if they become sick, what are the possible side effects that may occur that can create serious issues?
Yeah, thank you for that question, and I think if I understand what you are saying or asking is, first, we have talked about the number of children who are testing positive, and kind of talked about the data that we're seeing right now and an increase in that number, again, due to some of the impacts of vaccinations among other populations, as well as a more contagious Delta variant. We also have mentioned what frontline healthcare workers reporting an increase in the number of children being hospitalized. I will say from the Health Department perspective, we don't have that specific data, but we do know that we have had children who are hospitalized. We know that it is at a lower rate than other populations, but still do have them. I think what your question refers to is a couple other potential complications or reasons for concern. The first one is one complication that we have seen in children, which is called MIS-C, or Multi-System Inflammatory Syndrome, in children. We've had over 4,000 cases of that, that can cause significant morbidity, or children to have significant illness, to affect multiple systems, multiple of their organs, and unfortunately has resulted in death on numerous occasions. So I think that's one thing that we are concerned about and continue to see. The second, or more, or symptom, sorry, the second one that we sometimes talk about is what is sometimes referred to as long-haul COVID or long-term symptoms of COVID. You know, we don't have specific, concrete data on that. There is a good evidence that a not insignificant percentage of people who test positive for COVID do have long-term symptoms, and we have seen that in children as well. I can't, again, quote a significant percentage, but it's definitely something that we are concerned about. And again, as we get more contagious variants or just more spread in our community, which just means overall more people are going to test positive, including children, it will be something that we will be watching.
Thank you, and that's why I think we have to err on the side of caution for all the children, because we don't know, you know, what can happen, and we know we have students that are not even eligible right now to get vaccinated. And I think it is important that we do all we can to protect all children. Thank you.
Right, Mr. Strain.
Dr. Sullivan, one of my colleagues made a remark that if we wear the masks, we will stop COVID. Do you believe that if we wear masks, COVID will be eradicated? Or do you think that it's likely that we're going to have to live with COVID for the rest of our lives?
You know, I think it is obviously impossible to predict the future. It's learned it's almost impossible to predict what's going to happen in a week or two, but I do think that, you know, most public health and medical professionals, including myself, believe that eradicating COVID is not something that is very likely, that at some point, we will hopefully get to a point where we have enough, we talk about immunity in our, in our community, and the most effective way to achieve that immunity is through vaccinations, and we have three very safe and effective vaccinations available at no cost, widely available in our community right now. And if we can get enough immunity in, that COVID may still, the COVID virus may still be in our community, but will not cause the level of sickness, of hospitalizations, and death that we're seeing right now. Masks are absolutely a big part of our way to get there, right? And yes, we are at a point where if there is a small level of COVID circulating in our community, or people are not getting sick from it or having to go to the hospital, that is a very different approach that we take, right? That becomes a similar approach that we would take to other viruses that we know circulate every year. Unfortunately, I wish we were at that point right now. We are not. We are in fact going in the wrong direction. But I would like to say again, though, one of our number-one priorities has to be keeping our kids in school. I believe we can do that safely. I am the mother of five children. I have in fact three children that are currently enrolled in CMS and have been sending them to school in person. I truly believe that the measures we can put in place will be to keep them safe, but right now masks has to be a part of that.
Sure, I appreciate that. And so the vaccination rate that we talk about, the objective of the vaccine is to create antibodies. Is there any other method by which somebody can obtain antibodies?
Yeah, I think what your question is referring to is the, so getting, one of the reasons that, or the ways that vaccination works is it basically stimulates your immune system to create antibodies or protection. So if you're exposed to the virus, your immune system is primed and ready to go, so the chances that you get sick or have enough virus that replicates in your body to pass it on to others is much, much, much lower, and I think we've seen data that shows that. When people, there's also something called natural immunity. So when you actually are infected with COVID-19, the overwhelming majority of people are able to mount an immune response and create antibodies and recover from COVID, and I think, right? So those antibodies do last in the body for a amount of time. I think what we don't know still, though, is how long those antibodies last. I think that there is relatively good data that suggests that you are relatively well-protected for at least three to six months afterwards. We just don't know, and it's going to vary from person to person, how strong their immune system is, how much they respond, the risk of reinfection, as well as it's going to vary based on variants that are in the community, and if we do have variants that may be, for which those antibodies are less effective. But what, so I will say is, yes, that kind of a natural infection will create some level of antibodies, but we, what we do feel confident in is that the vaccine present, or gives you a stronger immune response, a stronger level of antibodies that likely lasts longer. And in fact, what we have seen is for individuals who have tested positive and may already have some level of antibodies that will last again for the short term, if they get vaccinated, they actually have a very strong response, which is why there is that recommendation that anybody, even if they've tested positive, also still get vaccinated.
So are we track, is there any data that would track the percentage of people who actually are carrying antibodies, either through vax or through natural immunity earned through the illness itself? The reason I'm asking the question is clearly if, if an individual earns immunity through contraction of the disease but not having a serious illness, right, particularly in that population we're talking about, who is not currently eligible to be vaccinated, then it's unfortunate that they contracted the disease, but if there's no serious illness and they have immunity, that's a good result, right? It's not a good result that they got sick, right? But if they don't have a serious illness and they are immune, that's almost as if, perhaps as if, they had received the vaccination.
So I think, and I want to acknowledge, I think, the point, it's an important point that you're making, right, is our goal is to prevent people from getting sick and dying from COVID, right? And one of the ways to do that is to have as many people protected from getting sick from COVID, and then the other ways to do it is to implement measures that just prevent spread in, in general. So when you're talking about having people protected, or protected, we talked about the vaccine is the most effective way right now, but again, that level of natural immunity. But I think what we know right now, just to go back to your first question, we don't have really good data about who currently right now is protected from kind of that natural immunity, and I think there's two challenges with that. First, we are just, don't have a universal antibody testing program, right, so we just don't know that. But second, we talk a lot about antibodies, and I think that's important, but that's not the only measure. So a negative antibody test wouldn't necessarily rule out immunity, or even a positive antibody test, we don't have great data on how much antibodies and how well they're going to respond, and how they respond to variants, and so it's not, just test, just doing that test wouldn't give you the exact information you need about how that will actually impact. So, but I think the question about, should we kind of just allow people to get infected, develop natural immunity, and/or get vaccinated to develop kind of the vaccine, immunity? I think the problem is right now, when you look at the data, that it is, that can't work right now. We have people who are, I mean, way too many people testing positive. Our hospitals are, you know, being stretched with their capacity. We look at what's happening around the country. We're still reporting deaths. So if we allow that to happen, if that's the strategy that we take and we don't implement other measures that we know work, we will see far too many people die that we could have prevented right now.
Hey, 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 that's enough, that's enough. We need, the public needs to hear this information. If you're going to interrupt the meeting, then you're going to have to be escorted out of the building.
So, Dr. Sullivan, I'm not suggesting at all...
Hey, Mr. Strain has a comment to make. Do not interrupt the business of this meeting.
So, Dr. Sullivan, I'm not suggesting at all that that's a strategy for protecting adult unvaccinated. Not at all. What I'm suggesting is that there is an immune response which has been triggered in a good number of the children in our community who have not developed a serious illness, and the data shows that they are unlikely, highly unlikely to, and their chance of death is negligible. And so in your last statement, you said, "We are here to protect the public from serious illness and death," and I absolutely agree. This board has a responsibility to educate and prepare kids, too. And so there is a thread of this conversation that I absolutely acknowledge that says the kids need to be in school. And if you put face coverings on, then you're changing the quarantine requirements. I'm not sure I fully understand, and I go back to the conversation you and I had over a year ago about just this topic with regards to how we combat viral disease any other day, any other way. And so in our schools, what we've done in the past is we've said, "If you show symptoms, stay out of school." Until those symptoms have gone away for 48 hours and then come back to school. That was for a much more dangerous virus to those kids. And so that's what I'm trying to reconcile, and the questions I'm asking are trying to assess risk and make sure that our management and mitigating measures are appropriate for the risk that our kids between the ages of five and 11 have. And as you know, the reason I say five and, five to 11 is because 12 and up are eligible for the vaccine. So we're really focused, I'm really focused, on that risk assessment of our five to 11-year-olds, which, as you know, we don't have data on, or at least not published data, for serious illness and death. We do, actually, we do have it for death, and the answer is two in the last 18 months, three under the age of 18 in the last 18 months. And so for serious illness, we don't have that information. If I'm using the right data point, and we're characterizing serious illness as requiring hospitalization. And so my question is, why is there a different protocol to protect these kids than there is for the much more dangerous virus that we call influenza in this population? Not in any other population, right? I'm not, I'm not suggesting herd immunity in any other population. I'm talking about this population that is not eligible, that we are here and need to protect.
And Mr., and Dr. Sullivan, before you answer, I just want to say, Mr. Strain, I want to give you all the time in the world that you need to arrive at an informed decision, but I also want to acknowledge that Ms. Delahara and Dr. Jones and Ms. Fowler have some questions and comments that they want to make, too. So go ahead, Dr. Sullivan.
No, and thank you for that question, and I will say, I know you, there was a lot that you said there, and I think one of it is the question about comparing influenza versus COVID, and I think that's a whole separate conversation, but I want to just address your question about, and I remember this conversation that you and I had, I think it was now well over a year ago, talking about, right, under normal circumstances, when we are not in the middle of a pandemic, so four years ago... So four years ago, if a child tests positive for the flu or has flu-like symptoms, absolutely first, hopefully, their parents didn't send them to school to begin with. But if they develop symptoms at school, they stay home until they meet the criteria to come back. And there's not, right, a kind of that case investigation and contact tracing that we do. But what we did talk about is we monitor that. So if we start seeing multiple people test positive for the flu, right, or multiple absences among students and staff, then we're going to start doing more. We're going to start saying what is happening, and we may take additional measures, where we may recommend that more people stay home. We may even, in some circumstances, recommend a short-term closure of a classroom or school because there's concern and we need to mitigate spread. If we then start seeing with the flu, spread among, that affects more than one school, that affects the whole school district, then again, we would take more significant measures. And if we started seeing significant spread among the community to the point that we got to a pandemic, we would take even further measures. So I think, yes, your comparison, if we ever, going back to your other point, if we ever get to the point where COVID, the SARS-CoV-2 virus is just circulating in our community, is not causing significant illness and death, we are not in a pandemic, then yes, our approach is going to be different. Right now, though, we are at a level of spread and illness in our community where this is not about a child testing positive in a school. It is about, we are seeing such significant spread in the community that we need to take significant measures. Those measures absolutely, right now, I think we recognize, we have the tools to keep our kids safe in the schools. We didn't have that necessarily at the beginning of the data protect that. We can keep our kids in the schools, but these measures are designed to do that, to protect the schools, to prevent having to take even more additional measures of closing classrooms and closing schools, and to mitigate the impact on the community. We know schools are part of the community, so that's when we monitor cases or viral spread. We're not just looking again at that individual classroom, we're looking at the entire impact. And I think that's a different situation we're in right now than with a single case of the flu. Again, I hope we get back to that point, but we're not there right now.
So I think just one, one last recollection from that conversation. I remember asking you, you know, at what point would you recommend closing a classroom, a school, whatever, right? And, and I said, you know, is it, is it five cases? Is it 20? I said, Dr. Sullivan, surely at 25 cases, we're closing a school. And, and you said, Sean, it depends, which was the perfect answer for me, because then you explained why it depends. And, and my recollection of your explanation is it depends if they're linked. Because if they're not linked and they're just coming in from the community and the school is not a nexus for the transmission of the disease, then from a public health perspective, closing that school or closing the classroom does nothing if they're not linked, right? And that's why clusters are so important. If we're able to determine that there is a cluster and the nexus of transmission for the disease is in the classroom, in the school building, that requires a different course of action than if you have a number of cases, but they are not linked. So I appreciate that information well over a year ago in our conversation, and I take that to heart because that still rings true to me in terms of, from a public health perspective, what role we play in terms of managing the community spread. If it's taking place in our facilities, we need to address it. If it's not, if, if there's no indication that it is, then that's a different situation. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. So I'm going to go to Ms. Delahara, then Dr. Jones, then Ms. Fowler, and then Ms. Marshall.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to thank Dr. Sullivan for coming this morning. And really, we just want to thank all of the parents, community members, educators, and pediatricians who wrote to many of us on the board. I mean, many, many local area pediatricians wrote to us this week and expressed their direct concern about the Delta variant and the virulence of it, and also their experience with patients who were experiencing the long haul symptoms and some of the unknown factors. And I also, you know, many educators, teachers who wrote about, CMS teachers, instances of their students who were out for long periods of time and hospitalizations and the impact on the classroom. So I appreciate all of those who, who wrote, no matter where you were, or read every email, maybe didn't respond to them, but I certainly read them. I do recognize that we have certain children for whom maybe because of a learning challenge or a physical disability, or I think about our English language learner children for whom being able to read lips is very, very important. And I, and I also acknowledge those challenges, and I hope that we will, as we operationalize everything, you know, see if we can deploy resources to particular children that may struggle a bit more by wearing the face covering. I also recognize that some teachers wrote and said, it's very burdensome to tell students, you know, to adjust their mask. And, and so my support of this does not negate the fact that there are many, many competing factors that are here. But nevertheless, I stand, I do support this wholeheartedly, standing with the CDC, the AAP, Mecklenburg County Public Health, and multiple, multiple people who agree that the prudent thing to do is to continue wearing face coverings. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jones.
Thank you. Ms. Delahara has said a few things that I had planned to say. Wearing masks protects others, and we have to look at the whole picture best on, best practices from medical experts. I remember early on in this pandemic, there were free K classrooms, and we were constantly getting information from our superintendent about closing down classrooms. Do you remember that?
Oh, yeah.
And teachers were exposed, they were exposing their family members who were vulnerable. So this is not something easy in terms of decision-making, but it's based on a collective valuing of everyone and based on experts. I hate wearing this mask. Can't wait to get out of here. But I do it because I care about others. And I'm not selfish.
Thank you. Is that it, Dr. Jones? Thank you. Ms. Fowler?
Thank you. So as we stated before, masks work and vaccines work. We also saw in the presentation that our K through 12 students are at a lower rate of receiving the vaccines for those who are 12 and up in our K-12 schools. The CDC also made a statement three days ago and stated, this fall, everyone should wear a mask in school regardless of vaccination status. If you're in an area of substantial or high transmission, you should wear a mask in public indoor setting, even if you're vaccinated. Even if we're vaccinated in our K through 12 schools, we have to bear in mind that at this moment right now, we cannot determine if you're vaccinated, you cannot wear a mask. It's either all or nothing. And if we want to be safe, as we all want to keep our students in school, we need to wear the mask for now. As I stated before, the masks work, the vaccinations work. We need to make sure that our K through 12 students who are 12 and up are encouraged to get the vaccine and also encouraged to wear their mask to keep them safe and others safe. We also need to bear in mind that the data right now, where our K through 12 students are for students who are not together in high cluster settings for more than eight hours a day. We need to bear in mind that North MECC, for example, has about 5,000 students. Those students are probably not together with a lot of other people previously as we are going to be come August 25th. We need to keep that in mind when we are making this decision. I support the superintendent's recommendation, and thank you, Ms. Chair, for allowing me to speak.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Marshall?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think that in every email I have written about this, I've said my north star is to keep kids in school. I think that's the most important thing we can do. And based on the contagiousness of this disease, I don't see how we're going to do that without some protection for those that haven't been vaccinated. And as we keep hearing almost every six hours, data and news are changing about even, even that. So I think at the very, at this situation, at this point in time, this is the thing to do, to be able to keep kids in school. I've been hearing from families that have had summer activities where their children had to go home and, and parents lost two weeks of work. And, and we've got to avoid this for those families. We've also got to avoid this for our students' learning, because as I said earlier, we're not going to be able to function in a hybrid environment. I want kids to stay in their seats in the classroom, and that is, as I said, is my north star. Three weeks ago, we would have probably been having a very different conversation had the Delta variant not been here. But it's here, and we can't ignore that. And it's changing the calculus and the situation of everything. So I know we don't have all the data at hand we'd like to have. I think it's going to come in, and I certainly believe it's going to bear out, that this, we're dealing with a very tricky situation, and we're going to need to take care in order to keep our kids in school. One of my colleagues mentioned that we've heard from so many pediatricians, it's been probably over 100 pediatricians that I have heard from that have said, please, please, mask students, we want them to stay in school, that is the best place for them. So I believe this is the right thing for our community. I'm, I'm in support of this. I want to also say one more thing to our athletes. In terms of wearing masks and getting vaccinated, I want you to be able to finish out the seasons, finish out all the work that you've done. So really encourage our teenagers, our athletes, to get the vaccine. Make sure you do everything you can to keep your team on the field and, and in, in terms of masking, to be able to finish out all the things that you've started. So that's just an aside. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
All right, Ms. Shep.
Yes, I just want to say thank you, too, to all of the pediatricians that sent emails and really spoke about the importance of making sure we protect all our students. And that is going to be, right now, wearing masks. So I'm just grateful for those who wrote and also all of the constituents that I've read emails about. It's important that we care for all of our students, not just some. And also, you know, I wish I have young nieces and nephews in school and CMS, and they have been wearing masks. And I think it's how we start. They're really young, and their parents started them understanding the importance of wearing masks for their protection. And I think they can wear masks, and they, they will wear masks, and they will be okay. If we are okay with ensuring that our children know why it's important to safeguard themselves and everyone, and, and we are protecting everyone by wearing the mask, because right now, everyone is not vaccinated, and we know that's the choice. So I, I'm really saying this is important, and we must do the universal passing for all our students in K-12 to protect them all. And as we think about, anytime we have to safeguard schools, let's share, talking about if it was a lockdown, you're going to do everything you have to do to ensure that every child is safe, not just some. So I think that's important that we realize this is a situation where even though masks may not be what we want, I've been vaccinated, but I also know how scary, I actually felt that scare being vaccinated and possibly having COVID, because you know there's those breakthroughs. So I think it's important that we all stay masked. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shep, Ms. Cheek.
Thank you. This year, I celebrate my 30th year as a nurse. Actually, that's not true. It would be my 40th year as a nurse. I became a nurse in Mecklenburg County when I was 20 years old. I'll be 60 in two weeks. I've seen a lot, I've done a lot, I've worked with a lot of doctors. I know which ones are good and I know which ones aren't. If you ever want to call me for a recommendation, I'll give it to you, because I've worked with them all. I've taken care of children, I've worked emergency medicine, taken care of adults, I've held people's hands as they passed away. I've caught a baby when they came out and were born. I think I know science, but I don't think that just because I've been a nurse for 40 years, I'm an expert on COVID. So I do rely on those people that I feel like are the experts. I talked to them yesterday. We heard from Dr. Sullivan today. This Delta variant is different. In the past, I've wanted us back in person. I was a huge advocate all last year for us to be in person. I still am a huge advocate for us to be in person. The best way to keep us in person, especially in light of the fact that there is no legislation that allows us to do spotty remote, and in light of the quarantine, or quarantine protocols that say if you're masked, you don't have to be quarantined if you have a close contact exposure, in light of those two things, the lack of remote option from the legislature and the ability to maintain in-person education even in the event of an exposure if you are masking, I am going to support this. I am a huge advocate for parent choice. I'm a huge advocate for parent choice in education and in healthcare. And if your choices are just about yourself, I think it's a little bit different, but your choices in this situation affect others. So I am going to support this. I am also going to be watching the data. I'm going to be listening to what I'm hearing from the medical experts that I know in this community. And as soon as it is safe to take the masks off, I will be the one at the dais asking for us to make a different vote and change things. So I hope everybody understands that I will be monitoring closely. This is not a done deal forever. We're not going to wear masks forever. But I'm hearing right now that we're going to see peaking of the Delta variant over the next five weeks, and then hopefully a drop off pretty rapidly until the next letter of the Greek alphabet, which I can't remember what it is, pops up as the new variant after that. But because of those things, I do support this reluctantly. My main goal is to have children in person, in their classroom, with their teachers. So I will be supporting this recommendation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Byers Bailey?
Thank you. I have listened to both the emails, the phone calls, and the dialogue here at the dais, both from the professionals as well as my co-board members. The next Greek letter is Epsilon. The, well, in my experience with COVID has been personal. I developed the disease. I had a what totally, most people would consider mild symptoms, but it took me down dramatically, and I still have not totally recovered. That was prior to my being available, vaccine being available to me. I took the vaccine, I'm glad I took it. I hate the masks. I enjoyed not wearing them, but I'm going to wear them again for, because not only for the protection of others and my protection, because, also because I have fragile people in my household. I'm going to support this. We, we'll enjoy taking the masks off when it's safe to do so, but it is not safe now. Thank you.
All right. So, yeah, epidemiology is not my area of expertise. What I, what I know about is, is governance and, and running a school board, and, and doctors don't tell me how to do that. But when I have over 70 doctors on their own initiative reach out and urge me to support requiring masks, that's remarkable. I've not experienced that before in this role. So when, when you add the, the feedback from those 70 doctors, as well as our partners in the county health department, as well as the CDC, as well as the North Carolina DHHS, as well as the American Academy of Pediatrics, I have a responsibility to listen to that. I have a responsibility to keep the students of this school district safe and the employees safe. And so, yes, masks are annoying. I had got, really got used to not having to wear one anymore. But, but you know what? Safety is sacred, and also seat time in schools is sacred. And that's what we were elected to protect and to preserve. And so with that, I'm going to go ahead and call the vote. We're in hybrids, so I'm just going to say, first, I'm going to ask everyone to raise their hands. You want me to have, you want me to have, do a roll call? Okay. So I will turn to you then, Madam Clerk, to call the vote. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Board Member Rhonda Cheek, how say you?
I vote yes.
Board Member Dr. Ruby Jones, how say you? Board Member Carol Sawyer, how say you?
Yes.
Board Member Margaret Marshall, how say you?
Yes.
Board Member Sean Strain, how say you?
No.
Board Member Lenora Ship, how say you?
Yes.
Board Member Jennifer Delahara, how say you?
Yes.
Board Vice Chair Thama Byers-Bailey, how say you?
Yes.
Board Chair Elise Dashu, how say you?
Yes.
Madam Chair, the motion passes by a vote of eight to one.
All right, thank you very much. That concludes our business for today. I will now entertain a motion to adjourn. All right, motion from Ms. Sawyer, second from Ms. Byers-Bailey. All in favor, please raise your hands and say yes. Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.